We'll go ahead and call the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, December 17th, at order at 7:30. Nate, will you call Rolle?
Yes, Councilmember Schultz.
Still here.
Councilmember Bowe.
Here.
Councilmember Wang.
Here.
Councilmember Giesler.
Present.
And Mayor Winchell.
Here. Moves us to item four, adopting the agenda. Corrections or additions, if not an entertaining motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I got them both over here. Motion by Councilmember Bowe, second by Councilmember Schultz to adopt the agenda.
Just make sure it's someone with seven "I" on it.
Make sure you got seven "I". I got seven "I".
Seven "I", alright.
Everybody got seven "I"?
Yep, yes sir.
We're good. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Moves us to item five, visitor presentation. I got a couple here that are on my list here, so I'm gonna start with Beyond the Yellow Ribbon with Mark Melencore. And a whole cast of characters out there.
As always.
Hi, character.
Thank you very much.
I saw that, Ruby. Looby? Ruby? So did that camera.
Good evening, everyone. Mark Melencore, 112505 West Scott Lane. I'm with the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon of Chaska as a board president and committee chair. The reason I'm here tonight is twofold. First, is to say thank you to the outgoing committee members for your help and support over the last seven years now that we've been a part of Beyond the Yellow Ribbon of Chaska. Without your help and support, we would not have gotten where we're at today and continue to grow as a resource for our service members, their families, and veterans. Okay? We're able to go through and do an awful lot over the last number of years with your help and support. One of the things that we've done, we've adopted the Bloomington Armory as our armory. We don't have an armory out here in Carver County, so we took to adopting the closest one we could get our hands on. And it's been absolutely fantastic going over and helping and assisting those individuals as needed. We've also been able to help out with our number of different local veterans through a wide variety of things, through financial types of things and whatever else, same thing with our service members. Needs are gonna continue to grow. As most of you probably don't know, is that we're back in a deployment section for the state of Minnesota, so we have a lot of troops that are deploying back overseas. Things Minnesota's turned for rotation to relieve those that are over there now. So our support is still gonna be there. It's still gonna be necessary for us to continue on, and we do serve a vital part in this community with that part, with that. With that being said, earlier this year, I was given an opportunity that was dropped in our laps, literally, and we were asked to raise money for the Minnesota Assistant Council for Veterans. I'll have John come up and talk a little bit about that in a few minutes here, but we were asked to put together a golf tournament. And when it was first dropped in my lap, it was like, oh, God, no, not a golf tournament. But I had lots of support. Julie Weckman has been my right-hand person in being able to go through and help to make this a success. Now with most fundraisers that are done, the money goes outside the community and whatever else. I'm very proud to say that the money that we raised will stay within Carver County to help and support our Carver County veterans. And that's what brought me on board. And I'm looking forward to even our next year's event that we're going to be having. Give you a breakdown of what we were able to go through and accomplish. We held the golf tournament on the 5th of September. Gorgeous weather we were able to go through and do. Our gross total for the event was $15,625,000, or $625,000. Of that, there's always expenses. After expenses, we're able to donate directly to MACV, $8,343.05 for our first event. And this, you know, we had a lot of wonderful community support throughout the community for sponsors, gold, silver sponsors, and whole sponsors, and even outside the area where people came in and said, we want to be a part of this. We want to go through and help Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. What we do here is so vitally important across our community, but other communities are looking to us because of what we were able to go through and accomplish. I push the boundaries, I push my committee far beyond probably where they feel comfortable in going through and doing. We're one of very, very few organizations that can actually accept online donations through a secure, you know, not through PayPal, this is through actually a banking institution that will take care of our credit card donations and stuff like that. One of the other things that I've done is if you shop on amazon.com, you can, we can receive money through amazon.com, through their smile.amazon.com. We're a part of that. Because we feel that it's most important that we reach out and make ourselves available as much as we possibly can. And all the money that comes in is here, it stays within our community to help and support our service members, their families, and veterans. With that, I'd like to have John come up and talk a little bit about Minnesota Assistant Council for Veterans.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm John Lowball, I'm with the Minnesota Assistant Council for Veterans. We help homeless veterans, and I'm the operations officer for our team. We're a statewide organization, and we exist in the Twin Cities here, and Mankato, Duluth. But, you know, in Carver County, really, we exist because of people like Mark, and your county veteran service officers who I served with, Dan Tingwell, and Brian Doty. I mean, and it really, we wouldn't be able to do what we do if not for their vision out here. And Mark's being very, very gracious about saying this thing dropped into his lap. That's like saying a really hard project dropped into your lap, and all of a sudden you had to do it. Whatever happened, I can say this, Mark made all the things at the golf course happen for MACV. We showed up, we told our story, and we were able to raise a lot of money thanks to his, your vision, and the vision here in Carver County. We're looking forward to doing a lot more work here in Carver County as we can, whatever we can do to partner with the organizations, we will do that. If you don't know about Minnesota Assistant Council for Veterans, please watch WCCO on Wednesday. We will be doing a telethon, we'll be prominently featured with many stories about what it is we're doing to help homeless veterans. Last plug about MACV, we help homeless veterans by having houses, and we would love to build one in Carver County if we could do that. We have some great partners with Lennar and Builders Association of the Twin Cities. But besides housing, we do legal assistance, and we also help out with employment. So we don't replicate anything that the VA is already doing, we just partner with them. So with that, we also partner with fine gentlemen here like Mark, and thank you so much for this opportunity.
John, thank you very much for your help.
Thank you. Thank you.
The last, my last special thanks, I want to thank Tom Apps from Deer Run for helping us put this golf tournament on. Without his guidance, it wouldn't have been as successful as what it was. I've done golf tournaments for the American Red Cross in other locations, and it's a lot of work. And this is still gonna be a lot of work, but it's absolutely fantastic being able to go through and help an organization that helps and supports our veterans and service members. That's all I have for this evening. Questions?
Fabulous work. Do you want to say names of all the people here with you publicly that make you recognized?
Committee members, stand up.
Aye.
Bob, Libby, Dan. These are all part of my committee that I have, and my volunteers. I am very, very grateful to those individuals, because without their continued help and support, I wouldn't be able to be up here doing what we're going, what we're doing, and supporting our service members, their families, and veterans. So, thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Awesome, awesome.
Mark?
Very good.
Can you give me a call? Oh, I'm gonna have some free time, and I'd love to help.
Okay.
Perfect. Well, thank you, Mark, for all, and all of you guys, for all that you do for our veterans. And I know that you guys just keep picking up a little more steam every year, every year it gets a little brighter, so thank you for everything that you do. And I know that your next golf tournament will probably be better, because I know you had some scheduling issues there.
Yeah.
I don't, I couldn't remember if I was gonna make the first one, then I thought, oh, it got changed, and we couldn't on the second one, but something happened there.
Yep.
But hopefully, and like, it sounds like you had it kind of last minute put on you, and sometimes those things, those things happen, but exciting, so we'll look forward to that.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
And I'd like to say, really do appreciate your effort and time involved in this organization. When this organization first started off in Chaska, it worked hard and struggled and found its way, and since, under your guidance and leadership, it truly thrived, and with this group and this committee has thrived and expanded in reaching out all over the county and outside the county as well. Doing great work, and congratulations, and good luck in the future.
Thank you.
As a former Blue Star mom, I appreciate what you do very much.
Thank you.
You need to come to my aid as well.
Yeah.
You've helped me in the past with my veteran children. Thank you.
Awesome. Alright, anything else? Anyone?
Aye.
Alright, next one on my list is WE-CAB Services with Mary Hirschberger-Tune.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all again. My name is Mary Hirschberger-Tune, and I'm president of WE-CAB Group. WE-CAB is a supplemental transportation agency that provides rides to people who cannot use or do other types of transportation. Excuse me. We work closely with Southwest Transit, we work closely with Smartlink, and any other people. We're there only to provide supplemental transportation. Over the last year, we've again served many, many Chaska people, and in fact, about 29% of our rides that we do are people from Chaska who need rides to somewhere. And about 25% are people that may not be Chaska residents, but they're coming into Chaska for business, either groceries, Bountiful Brad Basket, for many places like that where they are coming. This past year, we were able to add Waconia and a couple other cities, so we're pretty much all through Carver County now. We spend a lot of time in Chaska, partly because of 212. One of the things I wanted to do tonight before I went through a couple facts with you is introduce a companion of mine here in WE-CAB, Chip Kempenin. How am I doing?
Very good.
And I want to, he is a volunteer, so I ask him to say a few words tonight.
And this is just kind of in support of Mary, and maybe in the future, I can help out with some of these activities, so bear with me. I'm Chip Kempenin. I've lived in Carver County 25 years in Victoria. For the last two years, I've been a volunteer driver with WE-CAB. And more recently than that, I also became a dispatcher, so I learned that, and that's also a volunteer position. And I just want to say, I've really enjoyed doing the work that we do, giving people rides to their doctor appointments and whatnot, and I'm available if anybody has any questions or wants to talk about volunteering for WE-CAB.
Thank you, Chip. So I put on your desk tonight WE-CAB Fast Facts, so I could just summarize very quickly about the work that WE-CAB has been doing in Carver County. The total one-way rides that we have been doing is over 3,400. And what that breaks down to is we give about 70 to 100 rides each month, and we have approximately 30 volunteer drivers. I would say in any given month, it's about 15 or 16 volunteer drivers that provide these rides to people. We have active registered riders, that means they are taking rides at some point in time of almost 270 people, and they come from throughout the county. Watertown, Chaska, Waconia, I would say Chaska is one of the biggest users of WE-CAB. And most of our users who want rides to or from someplace, they don't feel comfortable using public transportation. They like the door-to-door service, they like being able to call and have someone take them, and then they can come back and pick them up at a certain time. We are finding more and more people are using us for chemotherapy, and people who, excuse me, people who actually need medical treatment, that they cannot find rides every day. We don't guarantee that we will provide rides every day, we don't have the volunteers, but we do end up taking people to 10 oncology unit and down to the University of Minnesota, too. We have, we have driven about 50,000 miles since we started in 2014, and that's about 12,000 miles a year that we volunteer. And then our volunteer driver hours are 2,500 volunteer hours. Our average trip is 12 miles, and so the cost, and it's a volunteer contribution, and so we send out an invoice that if you'd like to make a contribution, is about $5 a round trip for wherever they want to go, because most of our trips are 10 to 20 miles. So, and I left a brochure on your desk to explain more about that. Some of the highlights over the year is we've increased the number of rides that we've been providing to people. We've increased the number of riders. We also were able to hire a part-time executive director, and she's been on with us for about six months. We probably will need to hire a part-time office coordinator in the near future because of all the paperwork that we need to do for these rides. It seems to be a critical need of people in Carver County. We want to thank particularly the city of Chaska for supporting financially. WE-CAB, because we're a 501(c)(3) organization, we really are, we're completely funded by donation from people from the Rotary, the Chaska Lions have funded us, let's see, Ridgeview Medical Center, and Southwest Transportation. So those are just some examples. I guess the final thing I'd like to say is that what we are told by people is it's really hard to find transportation out here in all of the cities, even though Chaska is pretty well-served, as is Chan-Hassen, but some of the riders just don't feel very comfortable. They have a hard time using the dial-in services. For us, you can call, we just answer the phone, and then schedule the ride for them. So I think it's a very, it's renewed, it's increasing, it's growing every year, and I want to thank all of you for supporting us over the last four or five years. And I'll leave it open if there's some questions that I can answer.
No. I think it's a great service. I mean, just like you said, I think that you hear more and more about chemotherapy and dialysis and things like that, where people need rides every day and some that don't have that ability. This is an awesome service that's available, that, it's just that hard thing about getting that word out everywhere, doesn't matter where you put it, somebody still doesn't know about it, but, and it's so reasonably, the donation made is so reasonable, that, you know, I don't know, you can't...
And we don't, we don't waste money, that's for sure. And all of our drivers, we do reimburse them if they request it at the charity rate, which is a whole 14 cents a mile. Most of our drivers do not even request that. They don't, so they're volunteering their time, and their cars, and their gas here. So...
That's a great service.
Great service.
Good service.
Well, thank you very, very much. We want to, on behalf of WE-CAB, I want to wish you a very, very happy holiday, and Merry Christmas, and a very prosperous Happy New Year. And for those of you who will not be serving on the council, there's so many ways that you can help, even if you're going to the state legislature, even if you're retiring. So WE-CAB can always, you, help. So thank you very much for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Same to you and your family.
Is there anyone else under visitor presentation? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item six, which is approving previous meeting minutes. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I'd entertain a motion. Motion by Councilmember Bowe.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wang to approve the city council meeting from 12/3 of 2018. Discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Moves us to item seven, which is consent items. Again, for anyone that's not certain what consent is, is items that need approval but not necessarily conversation, but anyone can be pulled off for conversation if need be. If there's not any discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
Actually, I had a question I wanted to ask.
Okay.
Matt, regarding 7E, I had two quick questions on that one for the downtown street reconstruction.
Okay.
River City Days has just been curious as to the impact that would have on, you know, with timing and stuff for River City Days with the work being done on Walnut. At first, I think they were concerned that they were going to be surrounded on a couple of sides, but the map I see on, with Exhibit A, shows that it'll just be on the east side with Walnut. Will that be torn up during River City Days, so they have to find another place for like the music and such, or...
So you get to be the bad guy? No.
The answer, I would say, is unknown at this point.
Okay.
Really, we haven't looked at the timing. The project is really being ramped up to have Walnut Street potentially be constructed early on.
Ah.
So that before River City Days actually occurs, now whether or not the street actually could be driven on and those types of things, but could it function for the event and things like that?
Okay.
That's what we're trying to put forward with this project.
Very good.
I think the bigger impact is actually gonna be on Farmer's Market.
Oh.
So we're actually in discussions with the chamber about the Farmer's Market moving to a different location this summer.
True.
So, you know, at least with the River City Days, we're able to plan around one single event, so it makes it a little bit easier. The ongoing events end up being more difficult.
Absolutely, okay.
But we'll have to kind of do the same thing, do we have to wait for school to get out because of school at St. John's? Is that, so we really can't, we got a late start, so it's really gonna affect River City Days no matter how we do it?
Yeah, really, I mean, because of the, you know, the unique nature of this year's project, where St. John's and Auburn Manor are kind of heavily impacted, obviously streets have to start from south to north, so again, we're looking at it to see whether or not Walnut Street could be done first, and then when school is out, we could start the balance of the work, so we're just ramping up the process.
Yeah, Walnut Street actually probably could be done when school was on.
Right, right.
Yep, that's how we're programming it right now.
Is there a way to do something, so we rebuild the street and put a new blacktop, and then we pound holes in it for tents? Is there, is there something...
That final wear coat will fill all those...
Yeah, right. This time, yeah, first time. But is there, has there, has there been any thought, while we're in a thought process of some way that we can, I mean, I'm not putting you on the spot...
No, it looks like this is turning over to Brian.
I saw Brian, there was, there was smoke coming out of his ears, but just something to think about, because I know that that really wreaks havoc in the street.
Yeah, where the tents and everything go up, it's more of a permanent fixture. I think Brian's probably dealt with it as much as anybody, but we could try and work with them on a more permanent solution for how their whole arrangement gets set up.
Because I'm sure that tent pretty much sits in the same spot, and stakes aren't too far off.
What if we put anchors down?
Well, that's what they, that's what's done at GA, that they actually put anchors in, so you're not pounding walls.
Right.
And that's the only reason I'm throwing it out there, like I say, I'm not expecting an answer, but just something to think about as we move forward, so...
Absolutely, thank you. And Matt, the second question?
Yep.
I was looking over, and I noticed that, that creek that goes from Elm Street to Hickory, it looks like at some future point, is that gonna be put underground as well as was done with the creek to the west of Hickory? I see it's yellow on the map.
That will be a decision that will have to be made at a later date. We did set the project up so that in the future, if the bridge and things could be eliminated, that bridge that's at Elm Street will last a long, long time. Unfortunately, it's not structural deficient, and, you know, those, that bridge will be around for a long time. So, could the ditch and things be eliminated in the future? Yes, it would have to be a part of a later project.
Okay.
Yep.
And I know some of those neighbors would ask, if the creek goes underground, will we then be able to extend that alley to the north to go from second to third?
That could be looked at at the time.
Okay.
Probably in the next, we're looking at that particular route in the next two to three years.
Perfect. Just curious. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Anyone else? If not, an entertaining motion for consent. Motion by Councilmember Bowe.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz to approve consent. Discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries, moves on to item number eight. Adopt Resolution 2018-147, adopting the 2019 tax levy. Do I have it right this time?
It's right at this time. Mayor, councilmember, this item tonight is the last piece of our budgeting process and tax levy process for the year. So we, as you know, have gone through several stages of this, starting back in the August, late August timeframe. First official action we took was in September with the Plenary Tax Levy was sent, or was established. That was then sent out to residents to let them know the impact of taxes on their property. And that culminated in a truth and taxation hearing that we held at the last meeting, which we don't take action, but instead take any public comment before we move forward to actually establish a budget and a tax levy at this meeting. Because I know people didn't want to listen to me long, I actually bullet pointed out the things I highlight on here so that keep me focused. So, so a general fund and the tax levy. So the tax levy itself, reminder, it is, there's three components of that. One is inflation, one is new growth, and then any new programs are added. So inflation was 3%, new growth was 1.7%, and then we did add the compliance, code compliance division within our police department, which was an additional 2.4%. So it brings a total of 7.1% increase. One thing to note on that, it does keep us at the 82nd out of 87 lowest tax levies per capita in the Twin Cities area, so we still are very low compared to most communities in the metro area. The average impact on a home would be at $40 for the year, and it would set our budget at approximately $16.9 million for just the general fund. So these are tax levy-supported services such as police, fire, engineering, finance, those types of things. That actually only makes up about 20% of our overall budget, and so that's the tax levy and general fund component. I did want to just highlight some of the other funds, and I'll just go one by one. The water fund, just reminder, like we talked about last time, we are starting to see our conservation rates seem to have an impact on the amount of water usage within homes. Our average water usage has gone down from 7,000 gallons per month to 5,000 gallons per month in homes, which is a pretty significant decrease. We are recommending a 5% increase in the water rates, which would still keep us as one of the lowest water rates in the southwest metro area. The average resident would see an increase of a dollar per month in the winter, and 250 per month in the summer. Major expense that we have in the water fund this next year is the decommissioning of the water tank up on top of the hill from Fireman's Park. We'd have to install a pressure reduction station in there at the same time. That would be in conjunction with new development on the Hammer's property, and that's a cost of $300,000. Sewer fund, our major cost in that is that we do have all treatment through the Met Council. Met Council establishes a set price at the beginning of the year. Ours is a 5.41% increase from 2019, so our cost to the Met Council this upcoming year is about $2.4 million. Beyond that, we actually have the cost of actually collecting the sewer to actually get it down to the treatment. We don't recommend any increases in staffing for water at work sewer next year, we're set right for that. We'd be doing normal maintenance in our sewer, so sewer lining, our infill and infiltration program to reduce clean water getting into our system, and then contributing towards our street reconstruction program. We aren't recommending an increase in the retail rate for this year primarily because we focused more on our fixed costs for our service charge. Last year in 2018, we, the council approved a $2 increase per month in the service charge in 2018, and then $2 increase in 2019. So we're not recommending any change beyond that. Again, that would be focusing our fixed costs. Those are the costs that we have regardless if somebody uses their sewer or not. Those are the costs that we have regardless if somebody uses their sewer or not. Electric fund, we continue to be much lower than XL, our main competition. In 2018, we are 10.1% lower, which compares to about 9.1% lower the year previously. We're about 1% lower than Minnesota Valley. Our costs, our wholesale costs of electricity are going to be up about 2% next year. And most of that's coming through our demand rates through the, so that's more of a capacity rate that we have. We continue to see a pretty dramatic increase in electric usage. We've seen a 17% increase over the last five years. And that's not been just because of data centers, but also because of pretty robust development within our industrial park with expanding, expansion of buildings. This is a department that we are recommending one additional journeyman lineman that we'd need for this crew, based mainly on growth. We've also been down a couple of people the last couple of years. And over time, that catches up with, with us too. And then we're restructuring our part-time and seasonal staff. Instead of having a number, we're going to reduce it down into two employees that we'd focus on for a thousand dollars, hours per employee a year instead of having multi-employees working less. We have about $600,000 of system improvements that we do each year. So this would be things like varying overhead lines, rebuilding systems, rebuilding lines, things to make sure that we keep our reliability high. That reliability and price are the two biggest items that we focus on in our electric fund. So we would be recommending the 2% increase in the electric retail rates. And then storm sewers, our last utility. We did have sort of a major restructuring in 2018 where we increased our price by $3 a month. When really sort of set that base based on other cities that are river cities that have similar services to us. With that base now set, we can now focus on just looking at more of our inflationary costs. We are recommending a 3.05% increase in our retail rates for 2019. We'd continue to do work on keeping the flood control levy certified. That's actually an action that we're taking after this tonight. And then things like routine maintenance in our stormwater ponds. Major project in 2019 would be our salt storage shed, which we have. Finally, gonna get one. $175,000 comes from the stormwater fund. Another $175,000 comes from our general fund because they both use it. That's one that's really necessary. No staff additions recommended. And with the changes that we made last year, we're seeing a positive direction in our fund balance for that. So the, in all of our utility funds, the overall increase that people would see on their utility bill is 3% increase or $5.24 per month. So that's combining all of our utilities that show up on the, on the bill together. And then finally, our recreational funds, Chaska Town Course. 2019 is, so every other year, we look at rate changes. 19 is a year that we look at that. We would not plan on doing it in 2019. We're actually recommending that we structure it a little bit differently and really try to focus on giving our residents more encouragement to go out during the weekday times. So our recommendation would be just to have no increase in our actual green fees for weekday residential rates and just have a dollar increase for the cart to really try to focus on, on trying to fill. That's, we don't have any trouble filling anytime during the midsummer, but when you get into shoulder seasons, that's the time that we probably have the most difficult time to fill. And then really making sure that we keep up with market on the other fees, especially our non-resident fees, where we would recommend right around $3 increase. $2 of that coming in green fees and then a dollar of that coming in the cart, which when I showed you a couple of weeks ago, really keeps us well within that market that we compare to for non-resident rates. We continue, Oak 19 performs very well. They outperformed budget last year, even though last year was a terrible golf year. We didn't have one round in April and we had very few rounds in the fall because of weather. But they did outperform budget. So they've been getting very good reviews. The 2019 will bring a repaint or restaining of our clubhouse. We'll finish rebuilding the fairway, the fairway side bunkers. We finished the green side bunkers this fall. The fairway side bunkers will be this upcoming spring. And that's a cost of $50,000. And that does create a balanced budget for us in 2019. Our Par 30, again, we're recommending, just we do the every other year consideration of rate increase. We're recommending a 50 cent per round increase, which would keep us within the market. Our main competition is Hollis Greens, so making sure that we keep competitive with them. We are looking at adding, I don't know if this is the right term, but mini adult leagues for our Par 30. We've seen a lot of focus on people not, people wanting to play golf in leagues, but not necessarily spend five hours doing it. So having more options at the Par 30 for more adult leagues. We have senior and junior leagues that are very popular. They're, this would be expanding and see, can we do something with adult leagues too? And then we continue to work on the learning links of Chaska Project. They're actually in the process now of actually choosing a golf course architect for that. So that's one that they continue.
So that's still moving, huh?
Yep. It's one that they continue to do fundraising and then getting an architect on board. So that is still moving forward. And that, this budget's pretty small. It's $190,000 and it's basically a break even. I call it our only break even park in town because it's, it really sort of covers its own expenses. Chaska Community Center, this is one that, it's a 28-year-old facility. In 2019, we've put in about $4.3 million in capital improvements since 2012. And those have been in, in things like new mechanical system in the pool, all new ice making system. A lot of the things are sort of more of the behind the scene things. This is going to continue to be a real focus of the community center. It's going to have to be because of the age of the facility. We did do a major change to our membership structure last year, where we offered free drop-in classes and free daycare, as well as renovated our whole fitness center last year and went to a leasing structure for the fitness equipment. So we make sure it stays current in the space, which has had a very positive response. We had increase, initial increase of about $100,000 in memberships right after we put that out. The, probably the biggest thing in the community center this upcoming year is we do have a new community center manager that's coming on board. We actually did just make an offer to somebody today for that. And I think that's going to be a very positive when we look at, especially really managing the operations of the community center as a facility itself. This is one, one of the main focuses I sort of see them looking at this next year is really doing a full capital improvement analysis of the community center and a rate study to be able to really look at, how do we make sure we keep up with the improvements that we need to do, but also keep our rates properly structured so that we're competitive, but we're also keeping up with things? So an example of that is our family. Membership rates are 74% of the average of other facilities that really are not comparable in the area here, all public facilities. And so I think there's some things that, that we'll be able to look at. It's very clear talking to, to patrons that keeping up with capital improvements in, in that facility is a high priority. So that'll be a focus there. And then finally, the Curling Center continues to be a very popular facility. Just a reminder, the Curling and Event Center are really a separate enterprise fund from Fireman's Park. There are no tax dollars that go into the Curling and Event Center. The tax dollars went into the park improvements itself. The Curling and Event Center, just like our, our other enterprise funds, support themselves from the revenue that's generated within that facility, which really comes from four different places. Our restaurant, which generates about $400,000 a year. Our member and league fees, which generate about $460,000 a year. Our event center, which is about $138,000 a year. And then our corporate events, which we budgeted for $150,000 a year. Last year came in closer to 250. And so we've had a lot of interest in the corporate events coming to it. And we also see with that the opportunities to be able to bring more programming type things into the event center space, specifically in the weekdays. The, the weekends have been very filled. The weekdays are still a time that we could definitely utilize that space better. So we are looking, and this is something we talked about actually in 2017's budget processes, that the weekend rates, we are proposing to actually get those closer to the market but keep the weekday rates the same because we really need to promote that. No rate increase is proposed for this year, but we are recommending that half of the dues for USCA membership, which is $15, be something we add as a, a membership fee. We did add the membership last year to people within the facility. We didn't charge anything at the time because we wanted people to get an idea of what types of benefits could come with that. Really, being a member of the USCA has really allowed us to be able to attract things like Curling Night in America, some of the bond spills we have. We're looking at this being a high performance facility. A lot of the things that really make this sort of a unique facility. So that is recommended. And then the major staffing one would be because our facility operates, it's more of a 13 to 14-hour per day operation. We really need to have more of a full-time presence in, especially in the evening hours. More of a point person, point person within the evening hours, especially with some of the events that go on. And so we are recommending a facility coordinator position for 2019, which would be at $60,000. And with that, the, the budget balances at about $2.8 million. So that's just a general overview of all the funds that we have. Just as a note, you know, I had mentioned that our general fund operating, which is our tax levy supported, is 16.9 million. Of that, about $9.5 million is tax levy. But our total budget overall is closer to $80 million. So the, the tax levy component is, is really only about 10% of our overall budget within the city.
Questions for Matt?
Matt, a question for you real quick. It says 950 members currently at the Curling Center. And what percent of that are from out of towns? Is it still about 70%?
Yep. About 70% are out of town, 30% are in town.
So the good news is it's still a destination drawing people in from elsewhere.
Yep.
And I know the, the out of town members pay a little more than community members. So that number stayed fairly constant.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else?
After we mentioned again during the foot walking, did you hear that announcer? He mentioned it during the game they just had that we won.
Well, this weekend again. Okay.
He just said about wanting to try curling.
Oh, really?
After having the Vikings out there to visit us a few.
I didn't, I didn't see the game.
Yeah, it was just a brief little, it wasn't with a photo or anything.
So was the announcer saying?
Saying that he's considering taking up curling.
Pretty cool. Yeah.
One thing I will mention, just to save time, item 8D is really, so this item is setting the tax levy budget. Item 8D is setting the utility rates, which is something I just went through. So I won't present it again.
I was wondering if you realized that.
Yes. I thought it was pretty interesting.
All right. Any other questions? Again, we've been hearing these, this, this presentation since August. We went through our truth and taxation at our first meeting of the month in December. We did not have anyone come in regarding that or anything after. So we have been seeing this and, and going over this for quite some time. So again, we're just not jumping into this without much conversation. But most of people's questions have been asked and answered as we've gone along. But I'm going to open up again. If there are any further questions, feel free. If there are none, I would entertain a motion to move forward.
Go ahead and make the motion to adopt Resolution 2018-147. It has been a long, ongoing process and last one I'll be a part of.
Why did that make you smile more than anything?
I'm not sure. Kind of this warm, fuzzy feeling all of a sudden.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Schultz.
Well, I will second that. Since it'll be my last one.
By Councilmember Easter. And I, before, as we go into discussion here, I, I just want to say thanks to everyone for putting these budgets together. It's a challenging kind of year, all the department heads and Matt for all his efforts he put in and Noel and his staff and everybody that has to go through these budget processes that are very long and tedious. And although we seem like we just kind of scan over it quickly here, this has not been the case. So thank you to.
Several work sessions.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you to everyone that's put their efforts into making this relatively smooth. So in the comments that everyone seems to be throwing out here is there are a number of the council members that this is their last meeting. So that's what they're referencing when it says it's their last one, if you're not familiar with that. So. All right. So I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Moves us to be adopt ordinances 956, 957, approves zoning ordinance amendments to Section 5 flood control protection, Section 15 definition cities of.
Mayor, councilmember, the item in private tonight is actually part of the maintenance that we have to do on our flood protection area. There was some changes that were done to, to maps recently. At first, we actually thought that was going to have some impact on some homes within the community as we worked closer with Corps of Engineers. FEMA determined that it will not increase any homes within the community. But it's important to really update our flood maps. Because I think one thing I pointed out in the staff meeting is, or staff report is that, you know, there's very few levies within the, within the nation to protect areas. Most of the flood protection within the country is done by zoning, is to make sure that people don't build there to begin with. And so this is our important piece of making sure that the properties that we know are prone to flooding are not ones that we have somebody put a big investment on to. So that's the purpose of this. I'll turn over to Liz.
And I do want to touch on this before Liz goes into it, that there were areas that got put into, that would be in the flood zone that would have affected a fair amount of homes. That staff, and I think our engineer, Matt Clark, led the charge on that, was able to prove that, that that was not the case. And it may not seem like a big thing, but it's a huge thing about flood insurance. So the fact that we were able to get that back off there, to me, it's kind of frustrating that someone can come in. We have years and years and years of data that nothing's happened, but they can come in and tell you that, yep, this is in the flood plain. And then we have to turn around and prove it. And it's frustrating to me, but I just wanted to thank, and I don't, I know, like I said, that Matt Clark had a big part of it, and I'm sure there's other people that were involved in that. And I just want to say thanks to that because I can guarantee if it was different, this chambers would be full right now with very unhappy people.
Well, when you start out the process by going.
What?
Yeah, exactly.
Then you know, then you know you got an issue.
Yeah.
So, so it started with what and is ending up with something I think is pretty good.
All right. Sorry.
No, that's all right.
You got the floor.
Thank you, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. We're looking at a zoning ordinance amendment tonight to specifically our Sections 5 and 15 of the zoning ordinance, and those pertain to our flood protection section and definition section. So as you guys are all aware of FEMA, which is known as the Federal Emergency Management Administration, more commonly known as FEMA, are currently renewing their efforts to keep flood plains across the country free of obstructions. And by doing that, they are asking that communities update their flood plain ordinances to continue those restrictions for areas that are in the flood plain. With the recent floodings that were happening across the country, this is basically the trigger to have communities basically update their flood plain ordinances. So that's what we're coming forward with tonight is updated language and flood insurance rate maps that are applicable to the city in regards to that new change. So the flood insurance rate, rate maps, also known So, the flood insurance rate maps, also known as FERMs, are essentially those maps that showcase parts of the city that are either within or without, or outside of the flood plain districts. So, we're coming forward with these new maps and this new language added to our ordinances that are going to become effective on December 21st of this year. So, we are in basically the process to get that adopted and be in good standings with the National Flood Insurance Rate Program. So, all of the changes that you're seeing tonight are basically requirements from FEMA and the National Flood Insurance Program to be in good standings with them. So, I tried to basically break it down by the changes that are occurring with our, within our ordinance tonight, to show you what exactly is changing. I would say that much of the language that was in our previous ordinance is basically applying to the new ordinance tonight. A lot of the changes are basically reformatting what we currently have with a couple different additions to the actual ordinance. So, some of the new changes and additions would be the application of those new FERMs that are applicable to the city. They have included a section on how we treat annexation areas within jurisdictions. So, with us, we have a portion of Dalgren Township and a portion of Lake Town Township that are either sanctioned as future annexation areas or orderly annexation areas. So, within future annexation areas, when they do get annexed into the cities, they would have to comply with the Section 5 ordinance that we're adopting tonight. And then, with orderly annexation areas, specifically the Lake Town Township area, they will have to comply with this section currently, since we have zoning authority over them. Another change is they did add a new flood plain district within the FERMs and ordinance, and that's the general flood plain district, also known as Zone A. And basically, this is an area that does not have base flood elevations identified, so through surveying and so forth, whether or not you're below the ordinary high water level or above it would kind of dictate what part of the code you would be, or would have to comply with in terms of regulations. We are also incorporating new definitions into our zoning ordinance to reflect some of the new language brought over into this new ordinance of Section 5. I'm just gonna name a few, but all of them were laid out in your staff report, one of them being base flood elevation, flood insurance rate mapped, lowest floors, substantial damage, and et cetera. So, again, all of the changes that you see forth are basically kind of formatted and required by FEMA and the NFIP. So, we are moving forward with an ordinance that is compliant with their standards and the definitions that they require for these new ordinance amendments. So, with that, we are asking you to make a motion, two motions tonight. One to adopt ordinance number 956, which is approving the zoning ordinance amendment to our Chapter 5 of the zoning ordinance for flood protection. And then, a motion to adopt ordinance number 957, which is approving the zoning ordinance amendment to Chapter 15 definitions of our zoning ordinance. Happy to answer any questions, otherwise it is pretty straightforward and something that we do have to adopt before December 21st of this year.
Better get her done tonight. Just checking. All right, any discussion? I just turned this one from something serious to house cleaning now, housekeeping.
Right. No, but still, it was an important step.
Oh, it's very important, don't get me wrong.
It is.
Very impactful to a lot of residents.
I will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 956.
Right, so a motion by Councilmember Bo.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wang to adopt ordinance 956. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carries, moves us, somebody be willing to make a motion for ordinance 957?
Someone? I'm sorry.
Motion by Councilmember Easter, second by Councilmember Wang to adopt ordinance 957. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carries. All right, let me move on to item number C, adopt Resolution 2018-148, approving the concept plan for the S Lot and Ernst Home redevelopment.
Since we already got the EDA summary, I would turn it over to Liz.
Yeah, I was gonna say...
Yeah, I'm gonna try to make this as brisk as possible, since Nate basically stole my thunder tonight.
Thanks, Nate.
I hope in your briskness not...
This was one of two things I did all year long, so I really wanted to take that spot.
I'll commend you on that. So, we're looking at a concept plan tonight specifically for the S Lot and Ernst Home here in Chaska. So, here's an aerial of the current site with both sites identified. The Ernst Home is on the southernmost site, and then the S Lot is the vacant lot to the north of that. So, the relocation of the Ernst Home occurred in 2014, and subsequently after that, the S House, which was located north of it, was destroyed by a fire in 2014. It was demolished in 2017 after we couldn't obtain funds from grant applications that we applied for two times over. So, after that, we did come to the conclusion of demolishing the building. So, since that time, the S Lot and Ernst Home have been sitting there vacant and have been actively marketed to become a redevelopment site and be reutilized to be another vital piece in the downtown fabric. So, we're excited to bring this application forward with you tonight. And one of the other things that we also want to note is, as we're actively going through this process, we have also engaged a reputable architectural firm, McDonald &amp; Mac, to assist us with getting a nomination for a contributing status for the S House, which would open the doors for us to acquire national funds if possible, if we get the contributing status on the Ernst Home, that will allow us to have more financial opportunities there. So, that is something that we're actively working on as a part of this process. And also want to note that the city does currently own both those parcels. So, we're looking at a concept plan tonight, which is the first step in the process. It would essentially be to redevelop the S Lot and then restore the home, the Ernst Lot. So, they're requesting seven rental apartment units within those two sites. Three different buildings would be a part of that, so the Ernst Home having two units. The Town Home Building will have three units to the north of it, and then the Carriage Home Building to the west of both those sites, which will also include a parking garage and surface parking lot on the west side. So, this is the current site as it exists today. So, the Ernst Home sits on the southernmost lot. In total, it's about 0.4 acres for both those sites together. Currently, the site has frontage on Walnut Street, but also has access to the alleyway on this block, which will come into play for how they access the surface parking lot and the parking garage in the rear. So, they are showing six stalls for the surface parking lot, seven stalls for covered parking on the west side there. So, essentially, each unit will have a one-to-one ratio for their parking, so each bedroom would basically have their own parking stall. As Nate has mentioned before, the Town Home-like building is on the northern side in red here, and those will be essentially two-levels units. The Ernst Home will have one unit on the bottom floor, one unit on the top. The bottom floor will be a one-bedroom unit, and then the top unit will be a two-bedroom unit. The rest of the units on the site will all be two-bedroom units. So, a couple talking points and a couple things that were mentioned during Nate's presentation is this idea of a paseo. During our downtown master plan, we did identify a concept such as a paseo within the downtown fabric, which is essentially an idea or an alternative for pedestrians to utilize this alleyway area behind the buildings as a, an alternative thoroughfare from Highway 41. Being that Highway 41 is not as pleasant of a route to take, so providing more of a buffer and aesthetically pleasing area for people to walk in between the blocks was basically identified on this block in the alleyway. So, HKGI did provide a concept of this paseo on this block, which was provided as a supplement in your packet tonight. So, really understanding kind of the format of what the paseo means and how it should be treated also coincides with how this site relates to that western edge, specifically on, as it abuts this alleyway in terms of, you know, landscaping or the setback of the surface parking lot to this alleyway, how the buildings are going to be designed facing this alleyway. All those things are kind of questions at this point in terms of how it relates to the paseo in the back, and certainly something that we'll continue to work with the applicant on as they submit for preliminary. So, landscaping does come into that in terms of how that western edge does get treated. Is it landscaping? Is it a bigger setback? Is it doing things with the architecture? That's still a question at this point, but also being able to provide a nice edge, not only on the west side, but also on the east side as it abuts Walnut Street there. This is the design scheme that was put together by HKGI, noting the paseo concept within the rear of the site and the block as a whole. So, essentially, it goes from north to south, connecting Second Street East and Third Street East, noting some architectural elements or pedestrian elements that could be incorporated into this area and how it can ultimately be designed to be that paseo concept. Another talking point is the parking for the site. As I've noted before, there is a one-to-one ratio being provided for this site, which staff believes is inadequate ratio for what's being proposed there. As Nate noted before as well, we are looking at other ways to incorporate public parking within the downtown area, specifically as it relates to the parking stalls that will be lost as a result of the Highway 41 improvements planning to happen during the 2021 timeframe. So, with that, one of the areas that was noted was the city-owned parking lot to the south and doing a potential expansion over that. So, it would basically provide for a second-level expansion over that parking lot, which would be achieved via access from the Ernst House and S Lot site. So, with that, we're trying to work with the applicant on being able to prepare for that and making sure that's an option as this plan progresses forward. We did include some of those options or drawings as a part of your packet tonight to show exactly how that can be achieved. So, essentially, the potential accessing that second-level parking lot would come from the north side of the S Lot, accessed through their surface parking lot there, and up to that second level. And that's due to the grades that are basically present here on this site to be able to achieve that second-story parking expansion. So, again, that'll be something that we'll continue to prepare for as we kind of move down this process with this site. We've included a couple of the floor plans that we've kind of already seen, and how the Ernst Home is basically going to be programmed. We've shown the elevations of the site as well. They did provide two options. Option A was definitely the preferred option as they brought it to HPC and Planning Commission due to the fact that it had similar characteristics with the Ernst Home with the gabled roof. Option B was not favorable in terms of the comments that we received for it, so option A was basically encouraged to be pursued a little bit more. So, it doesn't necessarily mean that that's the end product or look of the building to the north, but definitely some pieces can be pulled from that as they continue moving So, in terms of the architecture, it is going to be a sensitive conversation as we continue to move forward as they are located in a historic district, the Walnut Street District, and the fact that they are next to a historic home, the Ernst Home. So, with any of the new construction, it should show compatibility and consistency with the historic district as a whole and with the Ernst Home to the south of it. The Ernst Home is going to be relatively unchanged. They have to do some maintenance to correct some of the structural pieces on it, but the facade itself will definitely be maintained in terms of its original format. They do have to add an exterior staircase to access the second-level unit, so we'll continually work with the applicant on making sure that element is a seamless piece as a part of the site and building. They are proposing a Chaska brick blend on the Town Home unit to the north, which is definitely a favorable decision in terms of staff's perception. We'll just continue to work with them on achieving an appropriate blend for that building that will be harmonious with the building to the south, but also to the other buildings in downtown Chaska. The parking garage should also be sensitive to the context that it's in, so providing 360-degree architecture on this building as it faces the paseo and the city-owned parking lot to the south. So, we'll continue to work with the applicant on refining the details on that building and the Town Home Building to ensure that it fits in with the downtown context. So, with that, we are asking to make a motion tonight to adopt Resolution number 2018-148, which is approving the concept plan for the seven apartment units on the S Lot and Ernst Home sites, subject to the conditions that are listed in the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise the applicants are here in the audience as well, if you have questions for them.
I have a question.
Yep.
So, we talked about the paseo concept quite a bit, and I know that the paseo concept predates this project by quite a ways, right? And it's one of the critical underpinnings to helping to make downtown really a walkable downtown, because 41's not going to get any better over time, right? It may be a little bit, but, you know, but, but in the big scheme of things, it's still going to be pretty high traffic. So, the paseo concept is really significant to downtown, because it allows access along those north-south corridors at least. How does that paseo concept interact with that alleyway? Because we noticed that, you know, some of the parking options had, you know, traffic coming through the alleyway, going to the backside of that proposed, you know, additional parking, whether it's a ramp or additional lot or however it's structured. What's the thought process right now of how the, that, how we prevent that from having a similar problem just in a smaller space?
I mean, where we're at right now with the paseo concept is we've highlighted some elements to make it more of a pedestrian thoroughfare, so benches, landscaping, having the brick pavers back there to basically delineate that area as a walkable area. I don't know if there's anything in addition to that that we've done to really kind of pinpoint other things to make it more walkable, but at this point, we have an initial design scheme to incorporate some more pedestrian elements within that corridor.
Design is going to be key on that, because regardless of what happens, all the parking's going to have to move to the back of the block with the loss of it on 41. And so, how that's designed, you know, any of the businesses on either side of that block are going to be served through the back. And so, you know, you know, design on how we make sure that it's sort of designed in a way that it keeps traffic speeds down, that people don't feel comfortable going fast, that, you know, that makes it clear that it's a pedestrian way. Design is going to be the key in what it actually looks like.
I think that the key thing here is that, you know, there's, we need to get traffic into that block in order to have parking for the businesses and the residents. The question is, what's the best way to do that to minimize the traffic along that, what's currently the alleyway, so that way it becomes a more usable paseo? Because if it, you know, continues to have a reasonable amount of traffic, like, let's say during some, you know, River City Days or some sort of festival that's going on or Farmer's Market, then the... then the desirability of the Paseo decreases when there's, you know, people are contending with cars just in a smaller, more of a parking lot-ish environment. Yeah, so I think that's, it's going to be a critical look at that. So looking at that as a whole, not, maybe not even just that single parking solution there, but across that whole block is going to be important.
Right.
Anyone else questions? Kind of went through this already in the EDA, so we kind of know. And again, this is a concept plan, so there's, you know, room for movement and things, and staff is working on that. I'll say it again, I think it's a nice-looking project. To really finish that out, that really needs to get done, and I'm happy to see something there that, and it looks, I mean, it's something we're looking forward to, you know, not just the developer's eyes, but I think it's a good project all the way for us as a city. So I'm kind of excited to see the next steps as we move forward, you know. Just that the sale in the alley, it's just, it's going to have to coexist. I just don't think there's any other way around it. There's businesses on there, they have to come in there, but I still just don't think that there's enough of thoroughfare traffic in there that we have to be overly, I mean, we need to be concerned about it, but I think that, I think they can coexist in my mind anyways, so.
Certainly need to be a consideration for, because I can appreciate Councilmember Wong's points on, as you are trying to walk past there, if there's a lot of increased traffic, it certainly will decrease the vision of what that is. So trying to help maintain that and maintain its integrity will be a challenge, but I'm sure you guys figure it out.
There's that smile again. There's that smile.
Nothing to worry about.
I'd be a little interested to hear from developers as well, since they're here.
Absolutely.
I think this is, this would actually technically make this their third project here in the downtown.
Yeah.
Well, at least the architect.
Right.
Right. Good evening, councilmembers and Mr. Mayor. My name's Laura Russ. I'm with Tauling Associates, and this is Nate Golan with U+B Architects. So U+B is the group that has worked on the two previous projects that Matt mentioned. And we're just really excited about this opportunity. It's a really unique and different kind of product than something that is currently available. It gives residents here who might be ready to move out of a home in a more suburban area some new housing options, and it's something that just really doesn't exist right now as a housing option in the downtown area. So that's really our main interest in addition to really bringing that, blending old and new with a historically sensitive architectural design and a complimentary new and modern piece. So Liz really covered everything else, but I'd be happy to, we'd be happy to take questions here if there are any more.
Now, these are listed as rental locations, so is there...
Correct.
Who manages and takes care of the properties there?
Right, so we have a number of properties in the Chaska area, and we are long-term owners and renters, so we designed it with that in mind. That's in part why there's an emphasis on more private spaces, the private yards as opposed to more common spaces, because we want to be sure it's managed well. With seven units, it's difficult to do that unless you have enough units, you know, within a reasonable area that a manager can attend all of them. So that was part of our goal also.
Questions, anyone else? I don't know. Like I said, I can't think of anything that I have to ask, and I'm kind of excited to see just something happening there. It just seems like that's more of a cloud on that little area there and...
An opportunity.
An opportunity.
It sure looks nice, too.
And I would just add that it is a tricky site, but I think it's really well-positioned to take advantage of all the wonderful amenities that downtown Chaska has. I think the location relative to Central, the main park and the other main streets, it's really wonderful, and I think it's a really exciting opportunity to have residents in an area that can take advantage of all those small neighborhoods downtown.
I just think it makes that house stand out even more and make it more beautiful.
I mean, in fact, if they get covered parking with it, I mean, that's a rarity in a tight location to be able to come up with that and still have, you know, additional parking, whether it's for a second car or for guests when they're over. Still all in that same site, everything has been well thought out, so.
How easy it is to deliver salt right next door. It'll be a piece of cake.
Walk around now. Certainly complement the block and the additional building, complement the additional house.
It really looks nice.
I look forward to seeing it, Nate.
Yep, it'll be a coveted location once, you know, as downtown starts really like energized, continues to energize more. You make, you think about like, walk around the corner and suddenly there's, you know, shops and restaurants and things like that. It's, you know, the population that increases, it's a pretty cool thing. That's what people are looking for these days, that kind of quasi-urban environment.
Chaska has so much still to preserve in the downtown core that unlike some of the neighboring suburbs, there's more there to bring people to, so that's what is interesting to us about it also.
Yeah, we think these are, we did think these are going to be very desirable given those amenities.
Awesome.
Fabulous.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, appreciate it. Your thoughts?
Absolutely. As soon as I can pull it up here, would be more than willing to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-148, approving the concept plan for the S Lot and Ernst Home.
And I'll second it.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Schultz, second by Councilmember Wang to, again, adopting Resolution 2018-148, which is a concept for the S and Ernst Homes lots. So, right, discussion.
Exciting.
I think we hit our...
Very exciting.
It's exciting, yeah.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, we move on to D, and we've kind of already, Matt's already kind of won over these. This is adopting ordinances 958, 59, 60, and Resolutions 2018-150 and 151 approving the 2019 utility rates.
I think these have to be done separate.
Yes, I figured that. Is there anyone that would like any further discussion? Again, we've discussed these along with the budget, so we're well versed in this at this point. So if no one up here has any other questions, I would start, we'll just go right down the line with ordinance number 958.
Motion to approve ordinance 958.
Motion by Councilmember Schultz, second by Councilmember Geisler to adopt ordinance 958. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Now we're going to do a, adopt ordinance 959.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wang.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Geisler to, again, adopt ordinance 959. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Now we're going to do 960.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Bowe.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wang to adopt ordinance 960. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Carries. Moves us on to Resolution 2018-150.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Schultz.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Geisler. Again, Resolution Number 2018-150. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Now we're on to 2018-151. Motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wang.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz. Again, 2018-151, Resolution Number. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, we got that done. Am I missing anything?
Uh-uh.
No. All right, we move on to item number nine, bills. Anyone have any questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Councilmember Geisler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wang to pay the bills. Discussion. Hearing none, Nate, we call Row.
Yes, Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Wang.
Yes.
Councilmember Geisler.
Yes.
All right, moves us on to other business. Tonight's kind of a, kind of a tough night. I, we're going to lose a bunch of councilmembers tonight, and more importantly, we're losing a lot of, I had it kind of figured out here that we're going to lose almost 40 years of experience tonight and earlier this month with Councilmember Rowe as well. Going to be challenging.
Kissing.
Well, still, it, there's a lot of knowledge that's leaving this, you know, daze as we move forward, and I just want to say how appreciative I have been, because I'm one of the lower guys on the totem pole here about coming in here and about how you guys have helped me through the process, and now I get, I guess I'm going to take on a whole bunch of new guys. And so, but I just, I'm just going to start off by, I'll start over here. Chris, you know, thank you for everything. 12 years on the council, that's a long time, and it's always appreciated you. A lot of times you're pretty quiet, but when you say something, we know we listen, and it's important, and that's been a real strong piece for me. You've kind of been that guy that keeps that calm ground and keeps us planted sometimes, and so I just, thank you for that, I appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Greg, you've been that, you get that questions, you always want to get them questioned. How about that hot spot? And how about that Kentucky Fried Chicken? Wasn't it that close? But that's important, too, we need that, you know, and I've appreciated that. You bring up a lot of things that sometimes, you know, that I might have overlooked or missed or even forgot about, but thank you for that, and that's, that's a, that's a big piece of what made this council work as well.
Thank you.
So, thank you. And Paula, she, she was that one that made sure we got it right. We had all, she's the Bob Lindahl version, making sure everything was dotted and crossed and teed and make sure we did everything, and that's important because I'm probably the least one that knows all of that stuff, so.
Well, I kind of ran a city, so, before this, so.
But thank you to you for what, for your service as well.
Thank you.
Four years is still a long time, I don't care what anybody says.
And I never missed a meeting.
And you never missed a meeting, good for you.
Never.
So, and then I just touch, Councilmember Rowe is in the audience with us as we're going to, afterwards here, we're going to have a little cake and celebrate that most of the council is at their last meeting. So Councilmember Rowe had 14 years on in a couple of different terms, and we've kind of already had our discussion there, but that's still greatly appreciated. But 40 years out of four people, that's a lot of years of service. And I know at least Councilmember Bowe had some additional years on some of the commissions here, so I don't know, maybe we hit 50 years, I'm not sure, but no matter what, it's a lot of years. And on behalf of, I'll just say, on behalf of the rest of the city, I'm going to say thank you everyone for all your service in the city, and you guys aren't going to be missed. We'll be able to go on, but it's going to be missed, and we have to learn, we have to learn all the nuances of everybody, but we're going to get through this, and we'll continue moving on, and our goal is to keep the ship going. We've had it going straight for quite a few years, and we're going to keep that going straight in matter. Thank you all.
Have a good faith in the world, no doubt.
With that, I'm going to open it up to you guys.
Well, real quick, from a staff perspective, too, we really want to thank all you guys for the service to the community. I always tell people I work with that, you know, to me, the two biggest things with a successful council member is somebody who's passionate about the community and somebody who's a good person. And I just have been lucky in Chaska, I've never worked with anybody in Chaska that hasn't met that mold, and I think that the community's been really lucky for that. I can tell you from a staff perspective, we've been really lucky in that, that we've always had a council that's had a great vision and a real care and concern for the community, and I think that's resulted in some really great things that happen in the community. So we really appreciate it, and we really appreciate all the service that you give. I have colleagues in other cities that would be very jealous to have that, in not so far away places from here, but on behalf of staff, thank you, really appreciate it.
We've really taken on some pretty good challenges and brought some pretty interesting projects forward, and we've been very fortunate, they've all been really, really successful, but that's, it's about what sits up here that questions different things, and everybody has a different piece to add to that puzzle to make it come out to be that prized possession that we have, so.
It's amazing what we've accomplished in four years, the number of projects that have come to fruition and how successful they've been, and I'm just so happy to have served in four years.
Mr. Bowe?
Well, yeah, I just jotted a couple of notes to make sure I don't forget anyone, and I probably will anyway, so. But I wanted to thank all the fine residents of Ward Two and family and neighbors who put their trust in me and elected me to serve on their behalf themselves and their families for the last 10 years. I wanted to thank other residents and businesses from around the community, community groups and organizations who would call with questions, and that's where half of my questions came from, were folks who are in the community who would reach out. That's an important part of the communication that we want to continue and that we value so much here. I want to thank the organizations that I've been able to serve on during my time on the council, like Southwest Transit, Minnesota Municipal Power Agency, Carver County Leaders, Southwest Corridor Transportation Coalition, those have all been fun and a great opportunity to learn more. I was thinking about it the other day, and it's been over 20 years that I've been up on the top of this, sitting up here, 10 years on the council and nine years on the Planning Commission, and then another couple of years on the Jonathan Board when they started meeting down at City Hall as well. So that's a long time, and there's been a lot of very exciting projects, including telephone calls from people who said, "We want more Big Box," and that was when Home Depot and Coles and Rainbow came in, and then calls from people who said, "We don't want more Big Boxes." So, you know, how do you balance that? And then filling the place with a very emotional meeting or two on Mary's House, and lots of folks from all over the town and all over the spectrum, Fireman's Park, City Square West starting now, many, many exciting neighborhoods that we've seen transition from an idea to concept on paper to fruition, and wonderful neighborhoods that are now providing homes for families and opportunities for new residents to come to Chaska and get to know what we have here. I want to thank staff who've been very patient with emails and questions from me, sometimes on weekends, and sometimes you have to send those questions when you have them, otherwise you forget about them. So Matt has gotten more than one text from me on a Saturday or a Sunday, and usually it would end with, "You don't need to respond now," but I got a yells wood, you know, so that was always much appreciated as well. And last but not least, I want to thank my family, who has been very patient with late-night meetings and calls from folks who say, "I want to meet you for a cup of coffee and talk about something," and me driving around the community on a Saturday or a Sunday to look at a cornfield, to see where the next proposed development is coming, and get a look at it to see, to prepare for the next meeting and to know how to answer those questions. So it's really been a joy and a fantastic experience, and on that note, I would look into the camera and encourage everyone who has ever thought about wanting to serve their community and want to give back to consider serving on the, one of our commissions, like the Planning Commission, or the Historic Preservation Commission, or the Human Rights Commission, or the Park Board, or one of our task forces that will be undoubtedly formed at some point in the future to deal with new projects and proposals coming forward, and the city council itself. It's a great way to serve your community and just a really satisfying experience, and so I would encourage folks to get, to give that some thought, to step forward and to give to your community, to give back. It's a great way to spend your time. And with that note, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Schultz, anything?
No, Greg pretty much covered it all.
Ditto, ditto, ditto.
Yeah, ditto, you know, I can't really state it any better than he did, but...
But, you know, there are a few personal things that I'd like to throw out there. And, and actually, one of those would be ex-mayor Bob Repke. When I first, first elected to this council seat, he was one of the first people to call me and offer congratulations. And since then, he's been a great sounding board, a dear friend and someone I, I value as a friend a great deal. And also for that matter, ex-mayor Gary Van Ile as well, who was the mayor when I first started on this council. His, his leadership and his dedication to this community was exemplary and just a, a great guy in general. Again, along the way gaining his friendship was something I'll always have hold, but very valuable. And of course, currently. Mr. Winchell? You've been fantastic to work with. You and Gary cut from very similar cloths. He's never once come in and ever made it about you. It's, it's always been about the community and really how we as a team can continue to move Chaska forward and, and make it better. Really appreciate your work ethic. I just, it's been just a joy and a pleasure to work with you. It's lasted seven years, it's been? Eight years, 10 years?
Nine.
Nine. Time flies, yeah, you lose in track. Wow. It, it's been, it's been great. And also staff, you know, everyone along the way that has sat in that chair. Nate, you've been a great follow-up to everyone else. And Matt, you know, you've been fantastic to work with. I really do enjoy it. As Greg pointed out, you've been quick with the answers no matter when we come across them. I've never had to wait for anything. It's, it's been fantastic and a pleasure to work with everybody, all the department heads. Everyone that delivers these presentations, you do such a great job. Divide us with the information, answer the questions we need. It, it's just been an incredible experience and I just really would recommend it to anybody. It'd give you an insight on this side of the chair that you just can't even imagine. And I truly, even though we have such a changeover going on in this council based on who I know are taking these seats with the guidance and leadership of Mayor Winchell. Mike, you know, you're no newcomer to this chair. You've been in the planning commission for, what, nine years yourself? With the guidance of staff and the support, I have full confidence that the capabilities of the oncoming council people will do a great job and Chaska is going to continue to just grow and be fantastic. Really look forward to seeing a lot of these projects. I've already getting a glimpse of move forward and I really truly wish you all the best of luck. Although I don't think luck is ever going to be needed. And then finally, of course, I've got to thank also residents and voters of Ward Three who have entrusted in me to represent them for the last 12 years. It's been a fantastic ride and I'm humbled and greatly appreciative of, of their support. And of course, start to get a little choked up because I also think finally my wife Nancy, she was here for my first meeting, she's here for my last. All the support and time as Greg mentioned, the extra work you got to pick up and take over. Without your support, I wouldn't have been able to get this opportunity and this experience. It's been incredibly valuable to me. Thank you.
All right. Thought you were going to pull the Hillary swank and forget your spouse.
Fortunately, she's sitting there.
So, first I'd like to congratulate council member Bo for being state representative-elect. By winning the recount. And I was actually going to add it to the agenda to do an official acceptance of your resignation, but I completely spaced it out when I came in tonight. And since the resignation happened on our watch, I was hoping that we were going to formally accept your resignation effective January 7. But anyway, best of luck to you.
Thank you very much.
And that position, I think you'll do a fantastic job.
I'm very excited about that. Next opportunity maybe.
I am excited to watch you make it to a better, a better seat ever. And I just, I wanted to thank all the residents of Ward One who elected me four years ago to represent them. And what a pleasure it's been, how many people I've met. It's been great. I'm sorry. I had a loss and my family yesterday, so I'm touching tonight. I, go ahead. Stop it. Stop it.
Stop it, Paula.
Stop. Thank you. I needed that. Thank you, Mark. Huge thank you to Matt, Nate, department heads, the staff. We've got the best. I've been around other cities, they don't have what we have. We're so lucky. And just the collection of knowledge that the staff and, and the department heads and the employees have here, we are just so lucky. And thank you to all of you for telling me that. I'm sorry. I was saying I was going to be stronger tonight, but I haven't been. But I don't like crying about so many people, you know? I'm usually tougher than that.
Are you laughing a boob lot? Or you got more to say? I don't want to stop you.
I'm okay.
2.1 million.
Yeah. That's already right up.
Makes it so much easier.
That's right.
Yeah. But it's, it's really been better than I expected because of the people I served with. You guys are awesome. All of you. I love our city attorney. He's like the best.
You're the only person that's ever said that about him.
I mean, we're, we're just, it's been a good ride. Sorry. Enjoy your cookie boxes.
Thank you for your...
You know. But I'm just, I'm just sorry for how it ended up like this. Some people know what I'm talking about. And I'm, I'm in here, but I'll still see y'all.
Absolutely. Yep.
You're my neighbor. I'll see you a lot. See you driving and out all the time.
He's also your mayor.
Yeah, that's for sure. And...
Not sure that was good.
Ah, no, it's just like...
You seem in line waiting to get out of your neighborhood in the morning.
Absolutely. We're going to get something fixed, aren't we, Mark? And yeah, I'm speeding past my corner, Matt. Still want to stop staying there. But anyway, it's just been a pleasure, so I, I wanted to say more, but I can't.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks. So Luke, has this ever happened before where we changed the whole council?
Nope. Oh, yeah. The very first one.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you should have asked him.
I should say in modern time.
Modern time? Before the dinosaurs, right?
Before the dinosaurs. I mean, I don't know if it has.
No, I don't remember. Actually, one in 1968 when it was all brand new council.
1968?
I was all new, yes.
Well, see, that wasn't that long ago. Why do you guys laugh?
It's like 50 years ago.
That's right. You guys weren't even born yet. I forgot. Mike, you got anything?
Not going to try to top any of that.
Yeah, I like to hear that. Luke, anything? Nate, Matt, Nate, Kevin?
I guess I would, I would just say thanks to everyone. So you're, you're the first council that I've got to work with. As, you know, being assistant here, so.
It's all downhill from here.
It's been fun.
Alicia started with the best.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you, Mark. And boy, did you fit in quick.
Good pleasure.
You fit like a glove when you move there and do that position.
Anything over there?
No.
All right, I don't think I really had anything other, other than the last meeting of the year. I just want to wish everyone very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We'll be back here on, anybody know the date?
January 7th.
January 7th.
Think I'll join you.
Well, some of us will be here January 7th. Right, Michaela? So, and just a little, we're going to, the meeting will be opened as we swear everyone in. So there'll be the swearing in ceremony and then we will start the meeting. So for anyone watching, if you're wondering what happened just when you tune in and, and nothing, it'll be kind of a different, but that's what's happening. So we'll do a swearing in. Generally, we take a short recess for photo ops for families and things like that. And then, and then we'll jump right into the meeting and get down to business. We've got work to do, so.
So that they take, we should probably all dress up as we'll take a council photo at that day?
No. No, we're gonna, we'll have a different date for that.
A different date, okay.
We'll do sort of a informal one that will go on the web page, but, yeah, but not the formal.
Formal, formal was... All right, last call.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Somebody, I can't give this to three people. What if somebody wants to have a little...
Do you hang on to it? You can do it.
All right.
You can do it for all.
All right. So I, I can't stop now. I have a motion by council member Bo.
I will second that.
And I have a second by council member Geisler to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post?
I thought about doing a post, but I made the motion. I can't.